It is May 19th, 2020. I'm calling to order the Lexington One School Board meeting for May. Do I hear a motion to enter into executive session to consider employment recommendations for 2020, 2021?
Madam Chair, move that we move into executive session to hear employment recommendations for this calendar year 2020, 2021.
Okay, I have a motion from Dr. Powers, so I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, I have a second from Mr. Anderson. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, it is unanimous and we are now in executive session, so thank you. And we'll go ahead and shut the door. Okay, it is now seven o'clock PM. I'd like to welcome you to the May 19th, 2020 general session of the Lexington One School Board. We have just been in executive session. Do I hear a motion to conclude executive session and begin open session?
So move.
Thank you, Dr. Powers, so I have a second. Thank you, Ms. Green. Is there any, are there any questions or comments, Board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. If you'll raise your hand, all in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? The motion carries and it is unanimous. It is now 4.0, I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the general session of the May 19th, 2020 Board Meeting. We are meeting tonight in compliance with the Governor's orders and the CDC recommendations. The auditorium has been thoroughly cleaned and sanitized before the meeting and will be after the meeting as well. Any Board member attending in person will take part in social distancing by maintaining a safe social distance from any other Board member. All Board members, employees, or other than individuals attending the meeting in person are encouraged to wear a face covering at all times. And if you don't have one, we have some, we can furnish if anybody would like to have one, and we would like for you to wear them, possible. Due to the Governor's restriction on public meetings related to COVID-19, the public is encouraged to watch the meeting on our YouTube channel. After the meeting, the district will follow its previously established process by posting a video of the meeting to the district's YouTube channel, Lex One Video Site, and our own website. Individuals coming to the Board meeting are encouraged to wear a mask. If we have more people attending than we have room in here, we will encourage people to go to the overflow room where they will have a video feed of the meeting and they can observe social distancing guidelines in that meeting. The district will place a lectern at the back of the auditorium for each speaker. A district employee will sanitize the microphone after each speaker. The district is in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. We have notified the media of the date, time, and place of this meeting. We would like to let you know that the district does tape this meeting for accuracy in preparing the minutes. And at this time, I'd like to call on Mr. Anderson, who will lead our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Mr. Anderson?
Please join me in prayer if you're so inclined. Our Heavenly Father, as we move forward in troubling times, we thank you for our many blessings. We thank you for the wisdom and the guidance you have given to us to make the right decisions and to do what is best for our students, teachers, administrators, parents, and the community at large. We ask that you continue to be with us as we graduate the class of 2020, that we remain safe and healthy. Bless those assembled this evening that we may carry on and provide for the needs of our district. Bless our teachers and our children, that learning continues regardless of how we may deliver it. Bless this community for their unwavering support in very trying times. We thank you for all our many blessings. In your name we pray, amen. Hope you'll join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, that was a beautiful prayer. Board, in front of you, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, I move to adjutant.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Green, do I have a second? Okay, thank you, Mr. Oswald. Are there any questions or comments regarding the agenda, Board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of the agenda as presented, please, please raise your hand. Any opposed? The motion carries and it is unanimous. Board, you've also been provided copies of the minutes from the April 21st, 2020 Board Meeting. It was the regular Board Meeting. Other than the corrections already provided and made, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of these meetings? Hearing none, we will accept the meeting, the minutes as received. 7.0, we will now go to reports and action items from executive session. Do I hear a motion to approve 19 certified recommendations for the 2020, 2021 school year?
Madam Chair, move that the Board accept the 19 certified recommendations as presented by Dr. Little and the senior leadership team for the 2020, 2021 academic school year.
Thank you, Dr. Powers, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson. We now have a motion and a second on the floor. Are there any questions or comments, Board, regarding these 19 certified positions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of the 19 certified recommendations, please raise your hand. Any opposed? The motion carries and it is unanimous. Do I hear a motion to approve two administrative recommendations for the 2020, 2021 school year?
Madam Chair, move the Board accept the two administrative recommendations by Dr. Little and the senior leadership team for the 2020, 2021 academic school year.
Thank you, Dr. Powers, do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Are there any questions or comments regarding these two positions, Board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. If you'll please raise your hand, all in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries and it is unanimous. It is now, it's now 8.0, which is citizens' participation. And the Lexington County School District One Board of Trustees provides a time for citizens' participation at each regular Board Meeting. We do have a few guidelines. First, in order to speak, you must be a parent or legal guardian of a student in Lexington County School District One or a resident and taxpayer of the district. Second, each speaker will have three minutes. Third, you may comment on an agenda item, school operations, programs, policies, or other matters of concern. However, you may not speak about specific individuals, whether students or staff. There are other ways to bring situations that you would like to address, such as that, to the Board's attention. We want to give everyone who came tonight a chance to speak. For that reason, Board members will not reply to individual remarks. This is your time to talk to us. If someone makes the point or points you came to make before you, if you could just state that you agree with the previous speakers and not restate every point, that would be fine, if you would like to do that. We also ask that you not clap or make any comments, either while an individual is speaking or after a speaker finishes, as that slows down the process. If you wanted to speak tonight, we ask that you fill out a card, that you give us your name and address for our records. These cards were on the sign-in table as you came in this meeting, and I do have three cards. If you have not filled out a card and still wish to speak, hold up your hand, and Ms. Hill will provide a card at this time. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? The first person is Chris Threet, is that how you pronounce it, Threet or Three? Three, okay. He is coming to address the property to be purchased on Two Notch Road. He lives at 608 Cedarfield Lane in West Columbia, and he has a child who attends Whitenow High School, Mr. Threet.
Charlie. 1668 Old Two Notch Road. We have a, Charlie owns the bar there, and there's four families that live in the houses there. And we were kind of struck, because we just remodeled the place. Anyhow, now we've got some petitions that I want to give to someone, I don't know who to give them to, give them to the Board. Anyhow, does, does the, does the school have lots of land they can use, or is that the only piece that they could buy? Or is there any recourse where we could keep the park that, that establishes sits on? Because it is a taxpaying establishment, so, all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Threet. Okay, we now have, hold on, let me put my glasses on. Mr. Charles Clayton, he is coming to discuss the property to be purchased, is it for the bus land as well? Okay, and Mr. Clayton lives at 1758 Two Notch Road, and he's going to talk about the property. Mr. Clayton?
Yes, I just wanted to tell you there's a misconception that the bar has not opened. We opened the bar back in July of 2009, and it has been open all this time, with the exception of when the Governor ordered it closed. And there are people, like Chris said, that are living in the house in a trailer in a camper. So it is not empty like it y'all seem to think it is. And we've been there that long, and if y'all have got all that land and you don't need to use all of it, my question is why are y'all been on knocking the buildings down when there's a business and there's people living in these buildings? That's something I wish y'all would think about before you start displacing people and income from that business. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And lastly, we have Brett Dennis Rawling. He's coming to talk about the purchase of property on 1660, wait a minute, on 1668 Two Notch Road. He lives at 144 Pine Star Circle in Lexington, Mr. Rawling? Or is it Ra- Railing or Rawling? It's Rawling.
It's Brett Railing.
Railing, Mr. Railing, I apologize.
I just want to reiterate about everything that these two gentlemen have said, and it's a very low-income housing right there where these people are living, and they will not be able to find anything in that area with the amount of money that, you know, is coming into their households. And Charlie has a thriving business. It was told on social media that it's two different parcels, so you can buy either one large parcel for your bus parking lot or depot and leave these people where they live, and Charlie owns his business. And I just would like to, just say if we could find a different resolution to buying the 2.6 acres that those properties are on.
Thank you, Mr. Railing. And, and I want to thank everyone who came to speak tonight. Dr. Little, do you think it would be okay if we had Mr. Salters call these three gentlemen tomorrow and discuss it and kind of get some more ideas from them? Would that be okay?
Yes, Madam Chair, I think we can do that. It's hard, it's hard to nod and, yes.
Yes.
Okay, great.
With the mask.
So, all the people that are here, if, since, let me make sure I have everyone's telephone number. We'll have Mr. Salters, who's coordinating the purchase of this property, we'll have him touch base with you tomorrow via your phone, if that's okay? And if you have a different number that you'd like to leave with us than, than one you left here, feel free to, Ms. Mary Beth Hill in the light blue, if it's a different number than you put on here, let her know that number so that we can be in touch with you. And we appreciate y'all coming and we appreciate your concern, and, and we're very welcome to, to your ideas. So thank you very much. So I'm gonna, does anyone need to leave a different number? Okay. So, is there, we'll now move on, we're going to go to 9.0, and tonight is the first reading of the 2020, 2021 General Fund Operation Budget. And Board, this is for information only, as you know. Yes, if y'all want to leave, you don't have to stay, but you're more than, you can stay, you can leave, you can stay a little while and then leave, whatever you want to do. We, we're so glad to see faces, if you want to know the truth. Our last four or five meetings, we've gone ahead, just us. So we're so glad to see y'all. Yeah, thank you, no, we appreciate y'all coming. Thank you. So at this time, Board, we're going to go to 9.0, which is the first reading of the 2020, 2021 Proposed General Fund Operation Budget. As you know by law, we have to have several readings of this budget so that not only that we understand it, but that our community understands it. And to be honest, things are sort of in flux right now with all that we've got going on in the world, so, and Mr. Salters is going to explain a little bit of that, so we're going to hear about that. So, Mr. Salters, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. We're good? Okay. All right, well, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I, as you mentioned, we're going to do the first reading of our proposed general fund budget for 2020, 2021.
Let's just make sure Ms. Garrison, Dr. Guyton can see this.
Give a thumbs up for them.
Can y'all see the, the presentation? I can't see them.
Yeah.
They can, okay, great, okay.
All right, we're good.
Go ahead, Mr. Salters.
All right, thank you. And normally, we would be, at this meeting, usually in this time of year, we would be doing a second reading of the budget. And, but given the, the state of the coronavirus, it hit right around the beginning of our budget timeframe, and we would have normally done a first reading in April and, and moved forward. But we wanted to push our budget process out just a little bit to see if the state would be making any changes and, and what they were doing. And so we're, we're here tonight for first reading. So I'm going to do my best to not pass out and talk through this with a mask on. So here we go. I'm good. If I can get, if I can get the clicker to work. All right. You're going to have to click, I guess, Josh, because it's not. Okay. All right. So the, just to recap for you, when we're talking about a general fund budget, mainly these are the operating expenditures for the district. So, you know, this budget lays out our expected revenues and, and expected expenditures on the operation side of our budget. So that's salaries and utility costs and different things like that. And I want to contrast that with our, Josh, go ahead. With our capital funds that we get questions about from time to time. Our capital funds focus primarily on funds that are restricted by law or bond covenants, and, and these funds are designated for our major building projects. You know, 2018, our voters passed a $365 million bond referendum, that's an example of capital funds that we use, and, and those are used for buses and library books and things like that as well. So, but they cannot be used to pay for the day-to-day utilities and associated costs that the general operating fund can be used for. So we looked at a number of considerations for the budget as we began the development of this, and we spent a lot of time through this process. But we do anticipate some funding shortfalls in this upcoming year. And, you know, although the General Assembly recently passed a continuing resolution for next year, we don't really know the extent of the, of the shortfalls. What that continuing resolution basically means is that they are going to fund us at the, the same level next year as they did this year, until they reconvene in September and potentially make some adjustments to the budget based on the economic outlook and revenue forecasts for next year. When they come back in September and, and, you know, make their recommendations, that does not mean that we could not yet still see another mid-year budget cut. We've endured those over the years a, a number of different times, and so we're, we're trying to be very fiscally responsible and conservative with the development of this budget in anticipation of, of something like that happening, given the, the state of the economy and the unknowns related to COVID-19 and, and how it may play out, you know, over the next fiscal year. So we anticipate coming back to you sometime in the fall after the General Assembly has done their work and do some kind of budget amendment to, to make adjustments for whatever additional revenue that the state decides to send our way, if any, they may tell us to hold, hold where we are. Additional considerations that we, we looked at in this budget, really want to make sure that, that folks understand that we're focused on quality education in Lexington One and, and supporting our students and staff as they, as they go through, you know, what we're enduring right now, and also hopefully when, when we get them back in our buildings, you know, later, later on when it's appropriate. Currently, there is no salary or step increases included in the, in the budget at this time. That's obviously due to the state's continuing resolution being done and no additional funding being provided. The proposed budget is designed to provide for student growth. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. We still have students coming into our district. We don't get to put up the no vacancy sign just because of the continuing resolution. Our, our budget does meet state and federal requirements and also inflationary costs that are due to us every year. I, I would point out, too, you, you may hear some questions from your fellow Board members across the state, or some of them may say, hey, we passed a continuing resolution, just like the state did, you know, why isn't Lexington One passing a continuing resolution? Why are we having budget hearings? Well, in this district, we have a lot of things going on. And so, Josh, if you'll advance. You can see these priorities for, for the upcoming school year. We're opening Centerville Elementary School. We're restructuring Gilbert Elementary and Gilbert Primary Schools in that opening process. We're also relocating Peleian Middle School. We're opening a college center at Gilbert High School. And we're also preparing for the unknown impacts from COVID. So it wouldn't be prudent for us to pass a continuing resolution, because we have new, new things going on in our budget that we have to account for. We have a, a school opening in the fall and then one opening in January. So we've got to provide for those, those differences, and therefore it's appropriate for us to do a, a budget with hearings and go through that process. Josh, go ahead. I mentioned growth earlier, and if you look at our average daily membership for this school year, we grew 508 students at 135th day, which is kind of the, the cutoff date that the state measures by. We're projecting some 527 additional students next year in, in growth. We did a, a little exercise, just because we were curious about the impact of a potential economic recession and how that might affect our growth during the upcoming year. Certainly, we don't know what the virus impact will, will be on the growth, but we can tell you that back in '07, '08, '09 timeframe, when we had the last significant economic event, those were some of actually our highest growth years in recent history. We actually were in the 7, 800 student range of, of new enrollees during that timeframe. So we, we don't anticipate at this time that impact to be, you know, too significant for us as far as new students coming in.
And, Mr. Salters, is that because of homeschool and private schools, kids coming back to public school, or just, do you think people moved into the district, or hard to say?
I, I think it's, it's primarily folks moving into the district. And, you know, there is some of the homeschool, private school scenario, where folks coming back in or re-enrolling, but I think primarily it's folks moving back into the district. And so, and we'll track that closely with, with home sales and things over, over the course of the year. I, I did want to mention, too, that we have, it's approximately 847 three-and-four-year-olds in the district at the 135th day of that 2019, 2020 number there. So, you know, that actually made the, the enrollment 27, 354, if you count those three-and-four-year-olds. So we're well over 28. I would anticipate us being well over 28,000 at the 135th day with total students served at the 135th day next year. So, taking a look at the proposed staffing changes, just remember that I just said we're going to grow, you know, over 500 students. What we're proposing to do is to do some restructuring of our ratios. At, at the elementary level, we would add a, a student per classroom in kindergarten through second grade. And again, we, we've worked, since Dr. Little's been here, we've worked on an initiative to try to reduce those numbers pretty significantly. And so this puts the numbers back in the, at the, at the kindergarten level, it would be 23 to 1. First grade and second grade also 23 to 1. So that's up from 22 to 1, where they are this year. But you can see by doing that, we actually will lose six FTE at the elementary level. And then at our middle and high school level, our Human Resource Department, Mr. Stacy, has worked really hard with our secondary principals to come up with an FTE model that, that allows them some flexibility to, to move staff to where the needs, the highest needs are. And we do have kind of a, a bubble of students matriculating up through our, our, our growth in, in some of our schools, and that's happening at the middle and high school level. And so some of those FTE are shifting that way, and that's why you see the five and a quarter there and the .75 at the high school level, additional FTE. We do have some growth in our special needs population, and so we've got a 7.5 FTE there. We have one additional instructional support staff, and then we have nine additional instructional support staff for special needs. These are not actually new positions. These are positions that we are picking up from the IDEA. We're supposed to be funded at the federal level for IDEA about 40%. We're actually funded at about 14%, and that ratio is really declining, or that percentage is declining. We're having to pick up more and more staff through those funds, and so they're, they're moving to general fund. We have two school administrative staff that we are reducing, and basically we're, we have two assistant principals that through some moves and changes are not, those positions are not being filled in going, leading into next year. Supplements, additional days and temporary salaries. We are, we have some additional supplements that are, that are in the budget currently related to our athletic supplements that were an initiative that was started four years ago now. And we, it was supposed to be a three-year phase-in, and in year three, we split that into two years, and this is the second year of that last phase-in portion, so it would be a four-year. Those supplements had not been addressed in, in over 20 years, when we started that process. So that, that makes up the 15 and a half additional FTE and the $738,000 to this, to the staffing. Thank you, Josh. Looking at our programs and services, this is what we affectionately call the accounts payable side of the house. And so we are budgeting an additional $300,000 in unemployment compensation reimbursement. This is really a direct impact of COVID-19. We currently budget about $70,000 in this account, and we had spent about $8,000 of those dollars to, to date. We are a reimbursable employer for unemployment, and so, and when folks file a claim, we end up having to reimburse. We don't have unemployment insurance, and that's, that's how our, our setup is structured. And so we've gotten some initial information that indicates that based on the claims that have been filed, we anticipate that reimbursement going up pretty significantly. You know, and, and so this is an area that we potentially can offset some, some revenue through the CARES Act and some of the other programs that are coming out. And so right now, we, we're showing this as a, as an increase, but eventually we may be able to, to offset these dollars by some federal revenue related to COVID nineteen, but we're, we're still working through that. Safety and security. This is primarily related to, the state gave us this year some additional resource officers, which was great. However, they only paid for the salary of those officers. And we have to provide in our, under our agreements with the municipalities that we work with, the, we have to provide the equipment. And cars, you know, bulletproof vests, et cetera, for, for those officers. And so this, this provides that equipment. It also anticipates a three percent salary adjustment for our current SRO staff. We are monitoring the town and, and county budgets to see what they end up with, and we may be able to reduce, you know, that amount should those salaries not increase by that amount. So we're going to keep an eye on that in future readings. Our employee assistance program, this is a new program that we are looking to offer our, our employees. This is an, an effort spearheaded by our human resource department. And Mr. Stacy and his staff have done a really good job of identifying another way to, to help benefit our employees by providing a access to a mental health program. And so we're, we're pleased to be able to incorporate this in the budget and certainly feel there are a lot of, of needs in our communities right now. And with our staff, you know, mental health and financial health are all very important at these times. And so we're, we're very interested in providing this, this assistance to our employees. Additionally, I mentioned previously about, you know, some ongoing inflationary costs. Workers' comp premium kind of falls into that. We, we have a premium adjustment next year based on our activity to date, and so that, that's reflected there. So our total increases are the six eighty seven, nine sixty. Looking at some decreases in, in the budget, we, our senior leadership team and our principals really worked very hard, and our, our, our finance staff worked really hard looking through the budget, finding ways to, to really tighten our belt as much as possible in preparation for the unknowns of, of this coming year. And so we made some cuts in, in some key areas that are reflected here, maintenance and repairs. This is a, a reflective cut from each of our schools. We feel comfortable with this cut, given the, the work that's being done through our referendum now at, at each of our schools. And so we feel, we feel like th- this will be okay. Technology supplies, again, we have some funds in our referendum to earmark for, that were earmarked for technology, and we feel like we can, we can work through that. Our school allocations, we cut that by, by ten percent. You know, and, and taking over this role as, as CFO for the district. One of the things that, that I wanted to do in, in looking back and working with our, our finance team. We look back at, you know, things that haven't changed in our, our division for a long time. And this is one of the things that has been structured in such a way for, I'd say probably over twenty years. Where we have given the same allocation amount out to each school based on their enrollment. What we attempted to do this year was make some adjustments to, to that allocation amount, that multiplier, using the Consumer Price Index as a guide. And, and we will continue to do that. Basically, we're increasing that multiplier each year by the Consumer Price Index. Cause we know that that, you know, roll a toilet paper twenty years ago doesn't cost what it does today. And maybe that's not a good example, because toilet paper is like gold right now, right? But anyway, I was actually a Mother's Day present for my wife. So side note, it was a big hit. So anyway, we, we've looked at that and I did get her some other stuff, by the way. And so we looked at that and, and we, we've made attempts to do that this year, but we still have, have recognized a cut in the overall school allocation. We've also cut supplies. And this is a, a pretty big cut, and this includes central services. Our individual divisions taking a pretty big hit on supplies. And, you know, this is one of those things that we're going to be shifting some expenses, some things we have been buying, we're not going to be buying anymore, and some things that we haven't been buying, we're going to be buying a whole lot of. You know, I, I got hand sanitizer on, on my mind right now, and I think we're going to be buying a whole lot of that in the, in the fall, so. Additionally, travel, we've reduced travel across the district pretty significantly. We just don't anticipate professional development being, being delivered in the same ways in the fall as it is currently. And so we're, you know, we've taken a reduction there. Staff services, international visitor exchange program. One of the things that we did in, in, as I transitioned in this role and worked with our finance team. And we went through and looked at basically every account in, in our general fund and said, let's look at a budget to actual and where, where are there funds out there that have not been, that have been budgeted, that haven't been expended over the course of a, a few years. This particular area, as well as the people transport area, were two areas where we consistently had, had some excess funds, and so we went in and, and reduced those, those budgets to, to better reflect the current expenditure levels for those, those programs. So it doesn't mean we've cut the international exchange visitor program. I don't want anybody to think that. We, we still have the, the money to do that. And that is a program that helps with our onboarding of our, our international exchange teachers. Many of which teaching our immersion programs, which are really strong in our district, so. And we certainly are still transporting pupils around the district, but that was just some excess funds that we, we had identified. So total decreases about one point, you know, one point five eight million dollars. Another area that, that I just mentioned, financial health or economic health. We're very, very focused on that in our, our community, and actually we've been having this conversation. I guess going on four years now at least, since Dr. Little has come in and, and really gotten into our system and, and looked at, looked at things. We started out with reducing our supply list, elementary teacher supply lists. That wasn't a board approved fee, but it was a, a, you know, a cost of attending school. And so the charge by Dr. Little was to, to reduce those significantly, and, and that was done two years ago. Last year, we looked very closely at our middle school fees and then also at our technology center fees. And so there were several fees in those areas last year that were also reduced. And so this year, we started looking closely at our, our elementary schools and our high schools. And we've identified these fees listed here for either reduction or elimination. The six dollar consumables supply fee for kindergarten, we, we're proposing to be eliminated. Twenty eight dollar grade one through five, a consumable fee, we're, we're proposing to be reduced to twenty dollars. And then at the high school level, we're proposing the five dollar consumable fee be eliminated. The five dollar language arts parallel reading fee be eliminated. And then the twenty five dollar parking fee be reduced to five dollars. So we, we understand that, you know, this, this can have a, a positive impact on our community at this time and the financial health of our, our, our folks. And we also understand it was an important task of Dr. Little and, and, you know, board members to be able to, to look at this. So we're happy to be able to incorporate that into this first reading. Taking a look at our, our projected revenue and the changes that we're anticipating. Right now, our, our local revenue, we're anticipating dropping about five point three million dollars. Of course, some of that is related to property tax collections and vehicle tax collections and things like that. It's also related to our investment income. I'm sure many of you are aware of your own investments, and you see how they're, they're operating right now. We're, we're, you know, in a similar situation, so we will, we anticipate less revenue next year than we have, have had in the past. As I mentioned, the continuing resolution, you know, with the state, basically we're, we're getting the same allocation of revenue, or that's what we're projecting. And you say, well, Jeff, that's not the same. You have one seventy four and there's a one seventy six. And you have eight point four five, or excuse me, five four five, and you have eight point five four three. The differences there are, those are the actual revenues that we have out, have received this year. And so on the left column, you see the approved budget revenue. We actually received more from the state this year than, than we had budgeted, and so we're basing the budget on the received revenue for next year. You'll notice in the, the final column there, the operational balance, this current year, we had proposed to use eight point two million dollars of fund balance. And then the upcoming budget, we're proposing to use three point seven million out of that operational balance. One of the things that Dr. Little tasked us with was trying to, you know, figure out a way to minimize that or to be more efficient and minimize that, that operational balance. And then COVID nineteen hit. And we decided, you know, hey, if there's ever a time to, to dip into your rainy day fund, this, this would be such a time. So while we've reduced it, we are still showing some, some use of that operational balance.
Mr. Salters, the, go back one, the state, so the difference in what was projected with the state and actual, it looks like it was from the penny sales tax set off from Act three eighty eight is really where that, because it, in one of the charts, it looked like it was about a million two or something like that. That was the difference was, so essentially we had more penny sales tax allocated to us than what we were told by the state.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, on the expenditure side, salaries and related costs. Our, our approved budget for twenty twenty was twenty, two hundred fifty eight million. And you're seeing proposed budget FI twenty one of two hundred fifty one million. I did mention that there were no, no raises incorporated into the budget currently. And I, I didn't say anything about anybody getting salary cuts either, so you're saying where's the difference there? Well, there's, there's two reasons for that difference. The first reason is our base budget, overall base budget was lower at the start of this budget process. We've had some experienced staff members retire. And some staff members with less experience come in, and so those numbers balance out and can, can generate some, some lower numbers. But we're also in, in one of the strategies we're looking at to, you know, gain all of our operational efficiencies, is we're looking at a, a fill ratio of our payroll. Historically, we budgeted our payroll at a hundred percent fill rate. Meaning that every position in the, in the budget was filled a hundred percent of the time or every day of the contract. And we, we typically have not achieved that hundred percent fill rate, because you always have some turnover in staff. The highest fill rate that we've achieved in the last five years or so is ninety eight percent. And we did that, I think, twice, and then it went down to like ninety five, ninety four percent. And so we're budgeting at a ninety eight percent fill rate for this upcoming budget. And so we, we're, we're going to monitor that each month very closely. And, and see how that, how that operates for us, but it, it, it does generate a pretty significant savings when you're talking about, you know, two percent of two hundred and sixty million dollars. Programs and services, you see the reduction there that, that we've already discussed, and so our total budget actually currently represents a decrease of eight million, twenty two thousand, four hundred and five dollars. Going down from two hundred ninety five million to two hundred eighty seven million. Just a breakdown of how the budget is, is divvied up, if you will. You know, the state has some guidelines on salary and, and related cost percentages, instruction, how much of that money goes into instruction, and we, we well exceed that. But you can see, as, we know, we are, we are in the people business, we, our resources are our teachers. They're the, they're the most valuable resource we have, and so you can see that's where the money ends up being spent. Talking about Act three eighty eight briefly, the millage rate for twenty twenty is three hundred twenty two point four mills. And the twenty twenty one millage rate is three hundred eight point eight six. There's a calculation that's done that, that dictates how much we can go up on our, on our millage due to Act three eighty eight. And we could potentially go up twelve point eight two mills. The value of a mill is listed there, two hundred eighty five, four forty five, so that would generate three point six million dollars. And we are not recommending as part of this budget, a, a millage increase on the operations side. Obviously, we have a lot of businesses struggling with the impact of COVID nineteen. And, and we don't feel like it's appropriate for, for us to levy additional mills on them and increase their tax burden at, at this time for our operational budget. So just in summary, you know, again, our revenues remain at the, at the state level. And our local projections have declined, some due to our economic climate. And, you know, some of the actual collection numbers that we're seeing. We are meeting our, our state and federal requirements. We're in, you know, dealing with our inflationary costs. Or we are opening our, our schools that were identified in the eighteen referendum building program, restructuring and relocating those, those facilities. As I mentioned, it does not include a, a millage increase for operations. And, and just a reminder that there's a budget amendment that will likely be necessary in the fall. Should the General Assembly pass some additional changes to the revenue. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Dr. Little, you might want to add some comments.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Salters. Really, I think as the finance team has.
Or you just won. Really, we had, I think the conversation between, among the, the team, the finance, the principals and, and central services staff. What I think this budget does maybe more than anything else is really prepares us for, as Mr. Salters started his presentation, for really potential budget cuts in the fall. And one of the things that we really struggled with was we are increasing and adding for programs and the things that we think are important, and we think they are good for kids, for sure. And then have to turn around and have to cut those very programs with, with teachers in classrooms. Things already started, that, that could really put, that could be a really big challenge for our schools. And so I think it's a, it's certainly a conservative approach to what could potentially be a really tough budget year. But I do think the budget overall puts us in, it really puts us in a, a strong position in the event that in September, there may be, you know, whatever the types of things happen when we have to, I don't want to start listing them, but you know, there are budget cuts. We're prepared and we're, we're really anticipating some of those things right now. Uh, we're prepared and uh, we're, we're really anticipating some of those things right now. And then if there aren't those things, then the school district will be in even stronger shape in, in September. Um, but that was really the thing. So, so the idea that really the continuing resolution thing may work for some people, but uh, the truth is that we, we really don't think with all the, all the COVID-19 impact that we've had, at least over the last nine weeks, 10 weeks, and we potentially continue to see over the summer that um, it just didn't feel right for us to, 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 to present a budget that way. So you'll notice lots of, lots of really belt tightening. Um, you know, we really, I, I really want to commend Mr. Salters. This is your first budget as CFO and really where it's his, you know, or it's his baby from beginning to end. And I feel like uh, they've done a, a real masterful job with this budget.
We can't hear.
Can you hear? Okay. Can you hear me now?
But we, all we can see is the PowerPoint screen as well.
Okay, they're fixing that, I think. Um, and Mr. Salters, um, I'm enthusiastic about this budget. Um, there are three things in it that I, that stand out that I really liked um, to see, kind of going down the sieve. The big thing is I'm um, delighted to see that we're holding the millage firm um, at this time for our community. I think that's um, the appropriate and wise thing to do, kind of going down the funnel. Um, I really appreciate the um, the way that you and your staff um, focused on efficiencies and examining the line items and the uh, historically what those line items and the budget um, have required and what they require going for, and just the adjustments that you've made there. I think um, we, uh, giving you some breathing room to um, to keep this budget tight. And then farther down in the funnel, as a parent, I'm delighted to see the um, the parking fee reduction. I think that that is a um, it's family friendly, especially as we're moving into the uh, next year. Um, and you're not knowing what the financial situation of our community is going to be. Um, I think that's something that um, benefits, you know, thousands of our students. Um, and so I'm really excited to see that. Um, I did want to make one comment, um, too. Um, I remembered this from last year. I, I think this question was asked last year. Um, but it's particularly relevant, um, given the um, on slide nine, the unemployment compensation, that $300,000 increase, that shows up in the budget report under the Board of Education Services. Um, and I remember last year somebody, we, uh, the question was asked, why um, that line item, that expense shows up in the Board of Education? Um, can you um, illuminate that? Just a little bit?
I think you said illuminate that, right? Not eliminate that.
Illuminate like
Yeah, expand upon that.
Explain why that expense is assigned in the BOE.
Okay, um, that, that uh, assignment is based on the guides uh, from the State Department of Education and, and where they recommend um, those things being placed as well as our uh, external audit firms.
Okay, thank you. Um, it always looks a little out of place on the um, Board of Education thing, but it makes sense because it's an, it's a district wide expense.
District wide expense, that's right.
And so the place to have it would be at the, at the top level of the budget. So, okay, thank you.
Um, and, and since I said audit firm, and I'm going to take a minute to do a shameless plug. Um, I, we didn't get an opportunity because we haven't done honors and achievements, but I, I did want to uh, take a minute to let the board know that the, the finance team uh, did receive uh, yet another um, outstanding uh, comprehensive annual financial report recommendation. Um, so uh, won awards for the, 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 this year's uh, CAFER um, yet again. And so um, uh, David Cobb and, and Deborah Seymour are here in the room. And I know uh, Donna Patton and Lizzie Price are at home watching as well. We kind of drew straws and I told some of them, just stay home. I'm not sure what the room's going to look like. Um, and so, but, but it's, it's a true testament to the work and effort of, of those folks. Uh, Tracy Lucas, um, and others in our, our finance office as well, that really um, do the day-to-day work to make sure that, that these numbers um, uh, are, are accurate and um, and work with our teams at, at the school level as well. I mean, it's, it really goes down to the, the principals and the um, the staff at school level too. So really pleased to, to bring that information to you tonight and um, we're, we're very blessed to have a really strong team um, in finance. So I appreciate that. And I didn't mean to derail the questions, but just want to get that plug in there.
And Mr. Salters, that's uh, what, 23 or 24 years in a row?
I have to go back and look. I think it might be 24.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll have that number for you next week.
Yeah. And that's on not just out outstanding performance, but transparency as well. So that's highly commendable.
Thank you.
And I would just like to say thank you. Could, we had a discussion about whether or not how to handle the budget this year. And I do know that a lot of school districts are just passing a continuing resolution. And it's a lot of work to put this budget together, but I think it's so important because this year is not going to be like any year we've ever experienced. I think y'all already shaking your head. It's already crazy, isn't it? So I just really appreciate the work and the thought that this, that financial teams put together with our principals, with Dr. Little, with Mr. Salters, because I think this year, this piece is going to be so um, it's just going to be hard. And we need to do everything we can to protect our students and our learning environment and make sure that we are doing everything to always be the star that Lexington One has always been. And I appreciate you guys really looking hard at this budget and working, working with every penny. So thank you. Board members, are there any other questions or comments for Mr. Salters?
I have a question.
I was going to make an observation. Yeah, we're talking about the College Center and standing it up, but I mean, we have a lot of good programs uh, that are up and running that I think the budget puts a spotlight on. And so I was doing some percentages and again, just looking at English as a second language. Uh, we spend about 1.1% of our budget on that. Uh, autism, we spend 0.8% of our budget on that. Um, all of our handicap programs combined together, 3.3% of our budget. Uh, all of our disability programs combined together, that's one of the bigger kind of specialty niche needs is 4.2%. And then early intervention in our four-year-olds is 1.8%. So you add all that up for, you know, your non-traditional student that uh, you know, just can't go through the normal workflow. That's 11.2% of our budget that we put toward children that need, you know, extra help in our classrooms. And obviously you always have the gifted and talented and IB and AP, and that's around 1% of our budget. So again, it's, it's impressive, all the different ways we meet children where they are um, to meet their needs. So.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. I think Ms. Garris has a question. Ms. Garris?
Yes, um, when the state budget is passed, will we be considering a retroactive step increase for employees?
Yeah, okay. Uh, Ms. Garris asked, I'll just repeat it. Um, when the state budget is passed, will be, will be, will we be considering a retroactive um, step increase for all employees? And so Ms. Garris, I, it's my understanding that the, the state will, when they do this um, budget session in, in the fall, that's what they're considering is whatever step increase it is, it would be for the um, for the fiscal year. So it would be retroactive. That's what we would be looking at.
Okay, thank you. Um, I did want to say also, I like, I'm, I'm actually, um, I'm liking a lot of this budget. Um, I like how you went back and looked at budget to actual for past years and historical fill rate. Um, I think that's, that's very important things in this 7.1 million dollar increase. Um, I think if, if the board in past years had been looking at the budget to actual and historical fill rate, then this is the amount of money we, we could have been saving every year instead of transferring into the capital fund. So I'm very pleased with that, um, and the belt tightening and of course, no millage increase. So I, I appreciate you going back and looking at all of that.
Thank you, Ms. Garris.
Mr. Salters.
Yes, sir.
So, one of the first things, you know, that, that a, a lot of myself and my, my small business colleagues did was at the beginning of the pandemic, we immediately instituted a budgetary freeze. Um, really just kind of hunkered down to, to get a bearing of, of how financially things were going to play out and, and to sort of better prepare in the event. Um, we had um, extended uh, other costs, if you will, PPE, so on and so forth. Wa- was there anything similar uh, done with Lexington One in terms of, you know, sort of immediate budgetary freeze at the start of this?
I, I think that's a, that's a really uh, good question. Um, we actually um, looked at some uh, may, maybe a, a slightly different strategy. Uh, can you hear me okay? Mr. Guyton, okay. Uh, we looked at maybe a slightly different strategy. Um, understanding what the budget outlook was going to be for this coming year. Um, one of the things that we, we had our schools uh, do was look at areas, um, you know, for the rest of this year where they may not be uh, going to be able to expend funds. Um, I'll give you a good example of that, and that is travel. And so where they had trips um, uh, planned for, um, you know, well, well, dating back from March up and through uh, June for professional development and other things. Um, we had them look at those funds because we, we canceled all that travel. We allowed them to redirect that money um, into uh, purchasing supplies and materials uh, for the upcoming year. Because we, we weren't sure exactly, and as, and as it is reflected in here, a, a supply cut for next year, we felt like they needed to do some um, kind of pre-purchase um, in anticipation of some of the cuts for next year. So um, we kind of did a hybrid of what you're talking about. Uh, so we, we did um, you know, kind of pause some things. But then some other things we allowed um, allow the schools and, and departments to transfer some money around um, to, to try to go ahead and pre-purchase some things um, in anticipation that, that next year um, it may not be as, as um, optimistic as we would hope.
A- and I guess kind of where I'm going with that is it, if we look at our, our sort of fiscal year to date, um, you know, we're at about 83% of the fiscal year, yet our expenses reflect around 67% uh, utilization. So the natural thought would be, we must have, you know, um, we must have kind of, kind of hunkered down there for a minute unless um, we expect to have some, some fairly high expenses going into uh, May and June, um, like a, a balance transfer or something along those lines that may would account for that. Is, is, is there any reason for the lag, the 83 versus 67, if you will?
Um, I mean, certainly with us not being in school, um, there, there's a, a natural um, uh, lag, if you will. Um, you're going to see a, a slowdown in power bills. You're going to see a slowdown in water consumption. You know, different things that, that are monthly uh, expenditures that are going to contribute to that lag. Um, but uh, but you also do have some things in our budget um, that are uh, annualized costs that may renew, um, you know, at the end of the um, at the end of the year. So, so you may have a license, a big software license renewal, uh, maintenance contract on, um, I think our uh, all of our switching and network gear um, renews at the end of the year. And so um, there, there's some things like that that hit that are kind of one-time-a-year costs uh, that will contribute to that uh, to some degree. But, but certainly um, you know, in, in general terms, our schools obviously have not been um, and you know, purchasing at, at the volume that they would have normally this time of year. So we have seen a, a slowdown as a result of that.
And, and my question would be, um, so it, it looks like the main driver for our, our decrease of the budget, if you look at the, at the total budget, the main driver appears to be revenue, uh, decrease in revenue um, as opposed to expense. And so with property tax and, and you know, historically property tax being a very stable form of in, income, and especially us being a, a, a growing market like we are in Lexington County. Um, have, has anyone at Lexington County given you an idea of why we expect such a, a decrease in property tax um, associated with our local source revenue?
Uh, one of the, one of the things that you'll um, you, you don't see on this slide, but you, you may can pick up in the um, uh, the individual sheet that uh, was downloaded in the PDF, uh, the, the revenue, the breakdown revenue um, document. As you'll see, um, I'm, I'm hoping you were able to access those documents, Dr. Guyton. If not, we'll, we'll make sure you, you get a copy of them. Um, the, the tax levies um, that um, were, were the first line item in that um, uh, sheet that I'm talking about. You'll see a, a, a $3 million decrease in that tax levy. Um, and, and you know, that's a, that's a decrease reflected in, in uh, last year. Um, uh, when that budget was developed, um, you know, the, the projection was a 66.7 million dollar uh, revenue estimate. And we, we have this year collected around 63 million. Um, so what we, what we did is we realigned um, that revenue with, with what we actually collected. So I, I wasn't willing to go off of just a budget number. Um, I really wanted to base it ba-, you know, on, on our true collection number. Um, and, and Ms. Seymour in our, in our office really worked hard to, to, to get these numbers together. And we talked through that and that's, that's where we were comfortable. So um, you know, we, we could budget, if you go back and look at trends um, over the last few years, and I could pull that for you, but um, you're probably going to see that, that number um, consistently um, over collection, budgeted over collection. Um, and, and so we just, we just tried to true that up. So s-, um, you know, not all of that is a result of um, you know, the, the COVID um, impact or the economic impact. It's, it's a result of of our work to, to align that, that projection with the actual collection, if that makes sense.
It does. Uh, thank you, Mr. Salters.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Salters?
I'd just like, like to say thanks to dear, because I know how difficult it is for not just principals, but everybody in the school system, when you got to go in September and October and cut a budget, that's very, very painful. So uh, I appreciate your foresight on that and and looking into the future. And uh, hopefully, hopefully we won't have to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Um, Mr. Salters, will you remind us on the schedule for the next budget reading and where we go from here?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Thank you for that, that prompt. I'll, I'll be happy to do that. So uh, we will uh, conduct second reading of the budget on our June 2nd board meeting, I believe it is the date of that meeting. Um, and then we will co-, uh, conduct third uh, reading. We'll have a budget hearing at uh, the June 18th. Um, it's the 18th, right? Not somebody help me. Yeah, the 18th. Um, June 18th meeting. Um, and we will uh, do a budget hearing at that meeting. And then you guys will actually um, take a uh, vote and, and um, on the, on the budget at the, at that meeting. I'm sorry, it's the 16th Tuesday, which is your regularly scheduled um, board meeting in June.
Great, okay. Thank you, Mr. Salters. And that will not be a Zoom meeting. It will be a regular meeting. We will not be zooming after tonight unless something crazy happens. And we will have a regular meeting. And I just would like to remind our constituents that we are here, that you, if you have questions, comments, concerns about the budget, you may call us, email us, text us, or come in person and address the whole board or send us a letter. So uh, we welcome hearing from our constituents. Uh, thank you, Mr. Salters, and thank you, financial team, for all that you did to put that together. Um, we're now going to move to 10.0, which is an action item. And uh, this is a nomination of a board member. So do I hear a motion to nominate Board Member Ann Marie Green as uh, Treasurer Secretary for the SC SBA?
Chair, move and make a motion for the board to approve the nomination of Ann Marie Green as the nominee for the Treasury Secretary role for the South Carolina School Board Association for the 2020, 2021 term.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have Dr. Powers and Mr. Anderson. And um, I am the one who added this to the agenda, so I'm going to talk about it. That's okay. Um, Ms., Ms. Green has expressed an interest in becoming an officer for the South Carolina School Boards Association. And um, I've uh, served in that role before and it's, it's really, it's wonderful for the school district and it's wonderful for Ms. Green. You learn a lot. But you also have a, a, a voice at the state level. Um, and you get to interact with people who are recommending policy, who are recommending budget changes. Um, and it's just a great position to be. And so she expressed an interest in this and um, I would like to, board, I'd like to nominate her to uh, be a candidate for the Treasury Secretary position. And um, does anybody have any questions or comments before we take a vote? Okay, hearing none?
Yeah, oh, I was, yeah, it took me a second. Um, in our agenda I am analysis, it says that the board, let's see here, yes. Yes, um, the board would like to consider Ann Marie for the position. But I understand that the nomination has to be actually made by a board member themselves. Because, I mean, this is just the first I've heard of this, so I don't know how the board was asking for consideration when it hasn't been discussed up to this point. I'm just wondering, like, how does the whole nomination process work?
Well, uh, Ms. Green asked me to consider her, so I am bringing it to the board as a, uh, consideration. I'm the one who has nominated her as board chair. Nominated her, and I'm asking the board to consider that nomination because I do require that the board, um, the board has to nominate her. She can't just go on her own. So I'm the one bringing it to the board, and I'm asking the board to consider the nomination. Okay. Any other questions or comments, board? Okay, we'll take a vote. Um, all in favor of nominating Ms. Green as a candidate for Treasurer Secretary for the South Carolina School Boards Association, please raise your hand. Okay, any opposed? Anybody abstaining? So, so we have six in favor and one abstention, and it passes. Oh, one of, oh, I'm sorry, I missed, who voted no? Jada, you voted no?
That's correct.
Okay, why did you vote no? If you don't mind telling us?
Yes, because until, I don't think our board officers understand their roles as officers. They can't make demands of other board members, and they also, they're not allowed to meet as a group without conferring with the board. They are equal to us, but our board officers don't understand that. As Dr. Little told us, you know, when you and I met that night, that, um, he's made sure the officers are involved in everything. Um, and I tried to explain to him that they don't get to make decisions on behalf of the board. They are equal to the board. We are, I mean, we're all equal. So one's not above the other. So until the board officers understand their role, I won't be recommending them for any other officer positions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Garris. And, um, I just would like to clarify, since Ms. Garris brought that up, I have not discussed this with anyone. I added it to the agenda, and I'm bringing it tonight. And I think that first y'all knew about it was when I proposed it for the board to discuss out here in public. We have not had any discussions outside of this room regarding this nomination. So I just want to make sure that everyone knows that I did not do anything untoward, um, in this nomination. So right now, and, and Ms. Smith, would you mind, because you've been through this before, just, I mean, I know we're running late, but thirty seconds of how the process goes now, like with the, with the, over the summer, that it's, you know, it's not a shoe-in, that it's just, I'm a candidate now.
Right. Um, what we're doing is, uh, the, the, uh, South Carolina School Boards Association has sent out a nomination form, and they said, is there anybody you would like to nominate? And so, uh, they, all the positions are open, uh, the open board of director positions, and, uh, every position on the executive team is open except for the president. That one just automatically moves up. And so at that point, any board can recommend someone, and, uh, and then at that point, they go and have an interview. Um, and then they meet before the, uh, committee, the nominating committee for South Carolina School Boards Association. And then they make a recommendation, and then when we go to our December conference, the entire body of the South Carolina School Boards Association will vote at that time. And so, um, I just thought, uh, Ms. Green would be an excellent candidate, and I just thought it would be good for them to consider her for that role. So that's how that came to be. Okay.
So moving on, uh, we'll now go to eleven point O, which is reports. And Dr. Little, I'm going to turn it over to you. And board, just a reminder, uh, the rest of the agenda is for information only. So, um, Mr. Dr. Little?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, we have, uh, as part of our superintendent's update, uh, tonight, I just wanted to let you know that, uh, we are hard at work now that the plans have been put together for the final, uh, portions of the school year, where graduation plans are in place. Uh, you know, this is a week, tomorrow's a, a big night for our, our senior athletes, especially our seniors as a whole, where we glow for our graduates. And thank you, Ms. Hill, for putting that together and helping organize that event.
And Dr. Little, I think it's the whole county.
Yes, ma'am. We're, we're going to glow the whole county, so we do ask for everybody to turn your lights on. I think around eight-twenty is, uh, the night, and, and keep them on for twenty minutes outside. And, uh, also, if you want to celebrate and recognize a senior athlete, because their senior seasons were cut short, uh, you can join a parade of people at any of your high schools to go around and, uh, and parade and wave and honk and make signs and, and all those other things for those senior athletes. So we're really excited about celebrating our athletes. But the point of that is, we are now in, um, a full, uh, really a full review of how we plan on re-entering in twenty-twenty. Uh, the State Department is working on guidelines for that, but we're also, uh, we're also hard at work for what it means for Lexington One. And so I hope to have your report, uh, about our re-entry update, uh, also at that June sixteenth board meeting. Uh, we should have quite a bit of, uh, information for you about our re-entry plan at that point. And as the state, uh, pulls their recommendations together, we're reviewing state plans from another of other, uh, states, Missouri, Maryland, those kinds of things. And we're also looking at other, uh, research-based, um, I'm having a hard time with the mask here, sorry. Uh, we're also looking at other, other research-based, um, suggestions about how restarts should happen. And so we should be able to give you a, 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 a good update on June the sixteenth. So I just wanted to let you know, that's where our efforts are now. It's about planning re-entry twenty-twenty and, uh, and what school will begin to look like, uh, in just a few short months. Because while we're getting ready to graduate, we're really right around the corner from another school year. So we are, we're already hard at work at that. But tonight, um, there's a number of updates, and I'm actually, um, uh, excited to share with you. Um, I know we haven't had an operations update, uh, in just, uh, maybe a, a board meeting or two, so I wanted to make sure Mr. Salters was, uh, able, he's going to do some double duty for us tonight, and present to us our operations update for where we are in some of our, uh, construction projects. And I think you're going to be excited for some of these pictures and the progress that's being made at the school. So, uh, Mr. Salters?
Before we do that, there is an error on the agenda. I just want to make sure it says Dr. Tally, it is Mr. Salters that's giving that update. So apologize for that. Just wanted to clarify for that.
And we actually had Mr. Salters not going last tonight, so we're. We appreciate that, Dr. Little.
He's able to share before everybody else shares.
Well, in, in, in the essence of time, I, I do have, um, a couple thousand pictures that I'd love to show you, but I'm not going to do that. Uh, we'll, we'll try to breeze through these really quickly. Very excited about our construction going on in our, in our school system right now, um, Centerville Elementary School. Yeah, it works. Um, thank you, Josh, very much. Uh, that'll make this go faster. So, uh, Centerville Elementary School, this is a prototype, um, plan, uh, that we've, we've built now. This is the fourth, uh, uh, iteration of this plan. You can see, um, I'm going to kind of point over here. I know the folks at home can't see the pointing, but you can see our driveways and everything coming in. Faculty drive, uh, on this side, um, I'm sorry, bus loop is, is over here as well. But you can see the, uh, we have a roof on the building now. We're very excited about that. This is kind of another angle, uh, and the highway that you're seeing out there, reminders is, is Highway One. So you can really see the school starting to take shape. And this is the, the front entry of the school, uh, so we have some brick up around the building. Canopies, um, are, are being installed now, and some driveways will be poured later this week, weather permitting. Uh, we do have the loading dock, uh, completed there at the kitchen. The, uh, generator is set. And permanent power is on the building. Uh, this is the.
Looks great.
It's, it's really, yeah.
It's a building.
That's right. Uh, it has been a few, a few weeks since we've done an update. Uh, they've done, then done a lot of work out there. Long way to go. Um, th- this is standing at the front entry, uh, again, um, that canopy there. This is looking out from the secured foyer, out through the main entry. And so, um, this is the kindergarten playground area. And, uh, the covered area behind the cafeteria. There actually, today, they were installing that, uh, storefront. Hopefully closing those windows up here soon. We got about two inches of rain today while I was out there on the site, and it's, everything's not dried in yet, so it, it, that does cause some setbacks. This cafeteria area, um, still a good bit of work to do in here. The kitchen area, uh, we do have some tile down on the, on the floors, um, and some of the serving line area. Um, this is the multipurpose area. And this is one of the hallways, so there's still some work to do, um, classroom hallways. And so we're, we're, we're getting there. This is another classroom hallway, so it looks very different. They've just poured some terrazzo. Uh, the picture does not do it justice. Um, it is not that, um, dark reddish looking color, I guess. But, uh, they have poured some terrazzo, um, in that one hallway, so we're, we're pleased with that. This is the main office area. You see they have some, um, drywall there, um, staged and ready to put up. And this is the center of commons area that we're all used to seeing with the hallways, um, kind of fingering off of that. So still some, a good bit of work in, in that space. And i- this is the media center area. So while the outside's looking really good, we still got a lot of work to do inside, but, um, we're, we're working hard to get there. Yes, sir. I'm glad I can't see behind your mask. New Pelean Middle School, um, uh, this, uh, just a reminder, we anticipate right now of a, of a January twenty-one opening, this school year, just January. See, parking lots are, are ready to, uh, to be paved there. Actually, they, they're doing some of that paving now. Uh, all buildings under, under roof and cap sheet, the white cap sheet, vinyl roofing, um, completed there. See, some of the parking lots are actually, the drives have been paved from that shot. Really all that's left to do in this picture is put the exterior doors, um, on the building. They're, they're really in great shape. This is a, the courtyard. This, again, model after Beechwood, uh, Middle School. This is the courtyard. We had to wrap those columns and, um, finish that out. A little bit different, um, stone, uh, color here, a little bit different brick color. But it, it's all tying together very nicely. And that's a, a shot of the front of the facility. Looking out the secured foyer down that main walkway, um, you see the glass, uh, the storefront being installed there. Here's the center commons area that you're familiar with, uh, and it's, it's really hard to tell because they haven't ground the terrazzo, so you really can't see much with it. But terrazzo is poured, um, all through, uh, the building and in the cafeteria space as well, so all through the main hallway and everywhere. Uh, they've done, done the terrazzo work at this facility. This is the auditorium. Uh, this is probably the last area to be completed, um, so it's, uh, has, I guess, the most work left to do, uh, but they're still really, uh, in great shape here. I keep telling them if, if they push really hard, they could probably make August. Unfortunately, they could probably hand the keys over in August, but we wouldn't have any time to move in, so we, we're going to need to, uh, stage that out a little bit. This is a shot, uh, on, from the second floor, looking into the cafeteria space, uh, that back stairwell, if you recall. The, uh, cafeteria terrazzo is poured, as I mentioned, the stage is, is poured there as well. Serving lines, um, are installed. Uh, this is the kitchen serving area. Um, the, the plywood on the floor is protecting the tile, all the tiles down and, and, and ready to go, so they just have to put a ceiling in there. Uh, the, uh, kitchen hood, where all the cooking will occur. Again, tile is installed. They're just protecting it with the wood, um, in that area. Classroom wing, um, all the ceiling grids in, and all the classrooms and in the corridors. So they're ready to, ready to drop tile in after, um, the, uh, both ceiling inspection here soon. Typical classroom, um, you can see their lights are in and paints, um, first coats of paint have been on, on the walls. About ready for carpet. This is a science lab, um, where we've got some, uh, uh, casework that goes around the walls and plumbing, um, all that's ready to go. This is outside the main office. If you remember the, that kind of intersection there that goes down to the main, uh, gymnasium area. And so the terrazzo is poured through there as well, really just what we're showing there. And then in the main office, this is, uh, just to the left, there is the SRO's office, and then, um, to the right would be to where the main countertop and everything will be. So all this sheet rock and everything's hung in here, um, and, and ready to be finished out. So really great progress going on a- at, at Pelean Middle School. Super excited about, about what's happening there. And this is a, a shot of one of the bathrooms, um, tiles down, just got to do some finished painting, um, in, in there. Media center, um, looking out from the second floor down into the media center. Similar to the, the look that we have over at, at Beechwood. Pelean High School, um, we, we added a, an additional locker room there. They, they did not have a facility for, um, soccer or for their visitor, uh, locker. So we, we've added this building at the end of the stadium. And it's a, a, you know, pretty basic building, um, but, uh, very much needed for, um, Pelean High School. Lockers are in, ceiling's in, really will be done with this, um, in, in, in a couple of weeks. This is the, the track improvement at, um, for Pelean High School, uh, eight-lane track. Uh, this was the only six-lane track we had in the district. And now it's, um, it's eight lanes. We've, um, uh, taken down some of the old bleachers that were on the, the lower side over here. Improved the home stand bleachers, made them ADA compliant. We moved all of the jump events. They were over here, uh, kind of off to the side, not really easy to, to view by the spectators. So we moved them and moved this, um, uh, the high jump area as well, uh, to make those more accessible. Install this, uh, nice entry element that, that is consistent with the baseball improvements we did, the softball improvements we did. And, um, here's the new track locker room and, and, uh, concession area. That's a tremendous upgrade from, from what they had before. So really excited about, um, about this improvement for Pelean High School. There's a men's wa- locker room and a women's locker room. This is a shot of the, the roof of the addition at, at Pelean High School for the weight room and the wrestling room. Uh, so you can get a, this is a kind of a ground-level view of that, um, weight room area. They'll have these, um, roll-up doors, uh, right here that will, um, allow easy access outside. And there'll be some, um, hard surface here for them to do workouts and so forth on, in that space. And, um, really close to occupancy here, um, and we'll have, um, weight equipment running down each side of the, of the walls, and then in the middle, they'll have a turf surface where they can do some, uh, kind of CrossFit workout, um, down the middle of the, of the weight room. Just another shot of that interior space there. Moving on to Oak Grove Elementary School, um, we've, we've kicked off the, uh, eight-classroom addition at Oak Grove. This is a, a much-needed addition to that campus. Started with some footings, and we started with some storm detention, which, um, is a great thing right now with all the rain we've had over the last day. So we have a new, uh, storm detention pond that's been installed. We didn't have storm detention there previously because of the building codes when that building was built. You can see the footings going in here. Additional work going on there. The new Lexington Middle School, which I think we're going to talk about a little bit later. Uh, that, that school relocation, this is the, uh, site. There, you can see a good bit of work has gone on. Just to orient you, uh, Cherokee Trail would be off in the distance back here. Old Cherokee Road would be in the, uh, at the bottom of the screen. You're kind of looking back towards the, the school site. And this area in the middle is the, you can actually see very well-defined, the, the wetland area, um, that we'll be protecting. So you'll have two drive entrances, as, as you recall, one here and, and a main, main one here. Playfield, uh, will be located up at the top here as you come in. And then, um, you can actually see the building pad, um, again, the prototype plan, so we have the three classroom wings. You can see that really starting to. Again, the prototype plans. We have the three classroom wings. You can see that really starting to take shape in this area. We've got some storm detention going in in the back. That's what these pipes are. They'll be put in the ground back here. So really good progress going there as well. And then I just want to highlight for you briefly, projects beginning this summer. We've got a number of things in our referendum. That are that are kicking off this summer, really excited about. So at each of these facilities, you'll start seeing some improvements. In in various areas and we will continue to update our. Our building plan. Progress page and keep you posted on on those improvements. We're real excited about all of these upgrades going on this summer. Fortunately for us to this point. Our construction companies we've been working with are continuing to operate at full speed and. We've had really very minimal impact from deliveries and so forth related to COVID nineteen. So we're excited about that. Happy to answer any questions.
Where are we percentage wise in the bond referendum? Are we around thirty percent of of funds expended? Just I mean ballpark? You can share it next.
Well, I actually actually in your board reports, there's a capital projects report. And if I could call you, I don't have it in front of me. I'm sorry. I left it at my chair. But if I could call your attention to that. It shows you by project what how much. We have spent. And then an overall number. So. And we keep that updated for you monthly. So you have that information. Available to you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Well, I'd like to publicly thank Governor McMaster for letting construction continue through this pandemic.
Yes.
I've been following some other states and I think there's like two or three states that are just now turning on construction like next week. And I just really want to thank him and that team for allowing construction to continue because. I don't know what we would have done. We would have been up a creek.
That's right.
So we're very fortunate in that respect that South Carolina was forward thinking and allowing us to continue building this building. Board, are there any other questions or comments for Mr. Salters? Okay, thank you, Mr. Salters. So turn it back to you, Dr. Little.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the one of the topics we've really spent a lot of time and energy and effort on over the last couple of years have been our middle schools. And I wanted tonight to have Mr. Poole, who is, as you know, in just. I don't know, just a little over a month, will be taking the reins at Lexington High School. It's the principal of Lexington High School. We're super excited. To have him. Going back out to a school. But he has been working really diligently with our middle school staffs and I'm sorry, our middle school principals rather about. Some scheduling options that we can do at the middle school to maximize time, place and space. I think that's the phraseology we like to use. So. Mr. Poole, take the way.
Thank you. And I'm excited to talk to you tonight about middle school scheduling. I think Mr. Calhoun and and I, we think middle school scheduling is way more exciting than than maybe the normal. Public, but it's it's a kind of wheelhouse we we live in. And like Dr. Little said, it's really less about the traditional thinking about a schedule and more. How students move through time, space and place to create the ideal kind of learning for them. And and that was one of our goals with this strategic plan to. Really examine how we were meeting the the objectives we wanted to meet with our our eleven to fourteen year olds and those in the middle years. So one of the first things we did when we started that strategic plan, and I've spoken to to this board about this before, was to pull together a focus group. And it's been continuing conversations since then to to really talk about what we wanted to see. Out of that use of time, space and place. And, you know, one of the biggest priorities was this this idea of dedicated time for advocacy. And we've we've seen that come to life in our high schools. And we're seeing it in our elementary schools. But that was a big priority for our our middle school faculties and principals. In addition. You know, we we wanted to get away from this idea of creating kind of false choices that you have to do this or you have to do that. And, you know, you must, you either have to choose between a performing art or a language. So we looked for scheduling opportunities where we could create. Kind of the best of of all those worlds. In in terms of the the measurement, what we wanted to see was a move we had seen over several years. That our middle schools were not progressing at the same rates as our elementary and high schools. And we wanted to to see if we could stop that. So. What you see on this screen are a lot of the goals and measures that we had hoped to to see some change in. The the school closure has has. Not allowed us to collect a lot of the the data that we would have hoped to have seen. Even in terms of of time and in classes. So we wanted to see a move of all of our middle schools. To overall ratings surpassing average, no middle schools with unsatisfactory ratings. As you know, this year, we're not going to have this state accountability ratings. And even in terms of the impact of time, we had made some some shifts in in the schedule to allow. Teachers in the traditional core classes, those that are measured by accountability measures to to have more time with their classes. Because that was what we found, you know, from the teachers, the students, the stakeholders, we need to see our kids more face to face. So the great irony of the first year of a new middle school schedule that's built around the idea of more face to face time is is that we ended up. You know, getting the opposite of that here towards the end of the year. And so we've done some data collection, just sort of anecdotally and qualitatively kind of telling the stories. And and some principal perspectives. So we had four middle schools try a new schedule this year that had a three elective option that gave some of that flexibility. And what they saw were they they tell these stories of kids not having to give up. Opportunities in the arts and and physical education and. Science and STEM and robotics in order to get academic assistance at our schools that that have students who need specials, special education or intervention. So. This schedule was allowing them to to get both that intervention and still participate in those extracurricular connection activities that are so important. Back another piece that we talked about was the. Really the ability to to honor world language. So it wasn't about necessarily giving up world language options. You can still have that, but this new schedule allowed it was just it sort of tweaks in time. So one principal described it kind of as the the best of of both worlds. And then finally, really just increasing without the school closure, the face to face time of this new schedule would have given. Math and and reading teachers thirty extra hours in the year with their their students, which we were really excited to see the the results of that this year. So this is just a look at Beechwood schedule, which four of our middle schools adopted this year. And this is on one of their advocacy days. So you can see that the the students have three connections classes. Which include a world language, a performing art, and then perhaps an intervention class, while they also have extended time. In their traditional core subjects that are measured by accountability. And that's worked really well for them this year and the the other three middle schools. And so each subject was able to get that additional planning and instruction time. Academic progress for all students was a priority and really flexibility. And that was the the big win for this schedule. Looking forward to next year. So we've been able to transition. So we've got Beechwood Middle School, Lexington Middle School. Whitenham Middle School and Pleasant Hill Middle School. That were on the the three elective schedule at this current year and. As well as Pelean Middle School. So. Carolina Springs Middle School and Gilbert Middle School will be making that full transition. And then as. Metaglin Middle looks towards two years from now as one of our bigger bigger schools, getting stakeholder feedback and seeing how that works with their programs. Moving forward. So that's kind of where we stand for next year. So with with the use of time, space and place, it's all about kind of choices and how we create more opportunities for students. With that, we we find the challenges as we go along and kind of make adjustments. We really hope to have some some data from this year, but the stories that we're hearing are those. Those gained opportunities for the kids that have been a real win. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
When will the next touch point for some type of standardized data to compare year over year? Will it be the fall assessment test will be our next touch point?
Yes, sir, Dr. Power. So we'll take STAR three sixty tests, which are formative tests. In the fall and we'll really see, we're already anticipating and working on some some materials for like some some summer launch. So kids are in all sort of different places. So what kind of materials are out there? For a parent like me who has a child going into a high school level class next year. And so looking at materials, but then he'll be assessed when he goes in in the fall. That's not state accountability test, but we will have some some. Standardized kind of assessments to look at where all of our students are in terms of of mastery of at least numeracy and and literacy.
But I guess in 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 actual classroom hours, our students actually had less time. With their teachers this year than when they did the year before. So really can't make any conclusions about this change for another whole year, probably.
That's correct, because even even when the teacher said, yes, I had more more time. I mean, at the end of the year, they. They cumulatively didn't have more time. They they had less with their kids. So it'll be a full year.
Well, I just would like to thank you and I thank our middle school principals. And I'd like to thank Dr. Little. I think Dr. Little, this has kind of been one of your dreams to make some of these schedule changes and really focus on some of these core courses and. Put more emphasis and middle school's tough. And I can say that from being on the board for twenty years. It's tough. It's just it's everything. You just get a lot of hormones and a lot of growth. Physically, mentally, emotionally in middle schoolers. And. It's just nice that we're really focusing on this. So thank y'all for doing that. And I want to thank the middle school principals as well because and the teachers because it's a lot. But I'm really pleased and thank you, Dr. Little, for making this one of our things we emphasized in Lexington one.
Absolutely. Now, having said all that, that may not any of that necessarily be in play for the fall because we're not a hundred percent sure where we are for that. But we do have a great. It is a wonderful foundation and it is my hope that we can really unleash the full power of this reorganization of our middle schools. I think across the board, it's going to make and forget standardized testing for a minute, just to tell you that, as I have always told you, that that's really the the lowest form for me in terms of effectiveness. But. I'm so excited for the choice that that our students are going to be able to make. I'm excited for really how our teachers can leverage that time into some powerful learning experiences. And so lots of great things taking place in our middle schools. And speaking of that. Mr. Calhoun, if you will recall, we had a. Mr. Calhoun had really approached us about wanting to do. The potential of making some changes about rebranding Lexington Middle School and. Everybody nodded and gave me the thumbs up when we were talking about that that night. And I believe Mr. Calhoun tonight is going to come to us and give us an update. On some. Stakeholder feedback that he's been receiving. So. Mr. Calhoun.
Thank you, Dr. Little, and thank you, everybody, for hanging in there. I'll try to make this as. Short and sweet here as we go. But. So when I talk about rebranding of Lexington Middle School, I want to give you to start with. Dr. Little gave you a little bit there, but I'm going to give you a little bit of the process. And why are we talking? Why are we even having this discussion whatsoever and how it kind of came about? Because I think that's important in the story here. You know, last spring, I just kind of take it over as principal and at Lexington Middle, and we were going through this rezoning process. Beechwood Middle is opening. And through that, we identified. You know. Beechwood and Pleasant Hill are all feeder to Lexington High School. And then for the first time. Lexington Middle School and Metaglin were were a true feeder to River Bluff High School. And so once that happened, the conversation that started to begun to come to me as the principal was from the community and my parents was. What is this going to look like in the future? I mean, my 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 kids are gator. My older kids are junior playing softball and. My kid's a wildcat in their blue. And so there was just some some conversation that started at that point. So then in last November, land was purchased for the new for the new school and really a lot of excitement there. Quickly, Dr. Little came to our and Jeff came to the staff and shared that, which is really cool and exciting. But then really quickly after Dr. Little had asked me to establish kind of a stakeholder, some some key people just to get drum up some excitement. And that included some PTO members, some SIC members, some kind of athletic boosters, just some people that. Across the board. And I think there were like fourteen families there. And Dr. Little and Jeff probably remember this. It was pretty quick after the thing. Well, so they gave the presentation. It's like, yeah, it's all exciting. And then, you know, it with in two seconds, there's like three hands. Of the parents. It's like, so Dr. Little, what's what's the new name of the school going to be? What's the colors? What's the mascot? And I mean, Dr. Little was handed a five. It was like, oh, well, there's a little bit of, you're giving you this, but we don't know. So we we handled it. But. So it kind of led us to have some conversation. And then to for me to go back to my school and eventually come back to Dr. Little and say, Dr. Little, like. I I believe we at least need to look at this opportunity. I mean, I'm going to get, there's going to be a new building. We're going to move. There's this piece. I I want to try to do this. Let's see what it looks like. And so then he kind of charged me this spring to kind of gather feedback. From our stakeholders, which I'm going to share tonight. And then hopefully fall, we continue to look at. You know, name, colors, mascot, instructional programs for what a new vision of this new Lexington Middle School can be. It excites me and I've got a lot of passion about this. I'm excited about this. So here's the way we did that quickly. Before COVID nineteen, I got to share with the rising fifth grade, rising sixth grade, which are current fifth grade parents that course registration night that was at our building. I got to give kind of Jeff's presentation and survey those parents, kind of give them the concept of that. Obviously, I I involved our school improvement council and deep had a deeper discussion of what this would mean for them because they're very important key in there. Let our faculty meeting on a regular Monday afternoon, support staff to admin, all the way and everybody in between around. Getting there. I wanted every voice to be heard on my staff. And we protocolled that out to make sure every voice could be heard there. And then finally, COVID played a little bit of a role into my. To our plan here. But Dr. Little and I had some discussion early May and just said, let's go ahead. I drafted a letter to my sixth grade parents. And those two parent pieces are are were important because they are parents that we we believe will be in the new middle school. Those are parents and of students who will be a part of the new site. And so we really wanted to get their feedback. So and was able to get. A decent number of the sixth grade parents just by sending that to them and asking their feedback. Staff discussion, I just put a couple of pictures because it was a much deeper, our our staff very much supports. Going through a rebranding process. You know, but I I lifted tried to lift everybody's voice and give these things. And one of the things that our staff really honed in on is. We this needs, we would love for this to happen, but how are we going to honor the history and tradition of the of LMS and slash the building that was once LHS? LMS, the central central services at one point. I mean, there was that. So all the the pieces, can we do? Can we honor that as we go forward? So that was my parent. So here's some, I want to give you some parent results there. You know. I I probably of the people I was able to probably got a third or so total of a parent, fifth and sixth grade parents, which when I don't have access to the fifth graders necessarily yet and. The sixth grade, I'm very pretty happy about that. And across the board. It's pretty much eighty percent of our people want to kind of go through a name change. This is, I pulled this simply from a Google survey, which I. I ask ours, would you support a name change? And if so, you have suggestions. I got I got plenty of suggestions. They they gave me. You know, sometimes always the best best kind is you drum up from there. And then if not, you know, is there a reason why? And so we got some good information there too. So. But really, there was a strong, you know, I thought, well, maybe one group will be different one, maybe they don't. But across the board, it was about eighty twenty that they support us going through with really a. But across the board, it was about eighty twenty that they support us going through with really a complete kind of rebrand. I kind of took the takeaways here of this. Our faculty and staff. You know, we got a couple of legacy people on board. I'm not going to say that they weren't like. Ah, Casey, I'm just gonna, you know, I'm gonna miss some of this. And one of the cons that they all put was, man, I got a lot of LM, I got a lot of L stuff, you know, a lot of T shirts. What am I going to do with that? I'm like. Well, we we can make that work. But overall, the store, the staff is really, I think it will be in the best interest for us to do that. That was their feedback. My SIC absolutely supports a fresh vision. Which is something we hope to begin in the fall of revisioning who we are and and then, you know, that important piece of our parents. And. You know, we I saw a support for a new name. Vision and kind of brand for the school. You know, the piece that I maybe didn't put up here that. Because you need, you kind of need data when you're getting this feedback, but is the. Many parents, the many guys stopping me at a at a at a basketball game at the at the play. I got two guys. Got me at the play this year in December is like. Hey, man, where are we at in this process? Like, we we fully support this. And so those those pieces, those conversations that were all about us rebranding. Really haven't had any of them that said, ah, just not so sure. So. Anyway, I kind of, this was, I was out there with Jeff, took me out there the other day, kind of panoramic. It's it's such a cool sight. I'm so excited for the for the future and. So I just very much thank you guys for your support. Questions?
Questions or comments, Ford? I was just think I want to mention. As we start transitioning from the old site to the new site. You probably should keep in mind when I was in seventh grade. In nineteen eighty, the Eagles class, we did an archaeological unit. It's somewhere way in the back of the current campus. And you're going to find a lot of some ancient artifacts. A bunch of twelve year olds made those. There was like four classes that buried things. For somebody in the future to find. So. They were there waiting for you.
Absolutely. I actually, we've got some staff members who have been there.
Yes.
Since then, and I have actually gotten some, you know, we've collected, hey, is there things that we need to identify to take with us or, you know, make special, that kind of thing. So I appreciate that.
And Kathy, I just want to say thank you in advance. You know, opening a new school separate from the name and the branding and the mascot is a huge uplift. And we're excited about your leadership and again, the culture that you're going to set at that that new site. So thank you.
And I want to share, I was, I've been walking through my neighborhood a lot during the quarantine and I got stopped for an hour. The other night and they very clearly told me that they thought Lexington Middle School should have everything new. And they also proceeded to give me lots of ideas. So if you need more ideas. I have, they were all good, but it was just interesting. It's really weighing on the minds of these mothers, these middle school parents. So.
That's right.
Thank y'all for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Mr. Calhoun. You know, as as an alumnus of Lexington Middle. Certainly, it 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 holds a special place in my heart, but you know, I I think it is a good reflection of of how dynamic we are as a community. And so I I think it's a great idea when. You look at a at a rebrand like this because, you know, middle school is such a crucial time, having two middle schoolers right now, I can tell you. It's a, it's very crucial. And so certainly appreciate your your leadership there.
So, Ford, Mr. Salters, you want to talk about our next steps? Well, I can talk about our next steps. I guess I'm sitting here. Our next steps then is we will then come back to the board with some with some suggestions as we normally do. And then the board will be able to take a vote on on those issues. School colors will really be more of a school based decision, which is what we normally do, but. And mascot typically lands on the school, but the school name. So we'd like to bring forth you some names when we go through our research. I'm sure we'll get Mr. Warren and and Mr. Calhoun and and others deeply involved and. Begin to have some conversations about what that looks like and and have you a some suggestions to look at. Do we do two readings of that or three readings? We do two readings and so we'll do two readings of that and let the community respond to it and. See what happens.
And Dr. Little, is there a possibility that if if we do change the name of Lexington Middle School that? That doesn't mean that that name is gone forever, that we could potentially.
Correct.
Because I foresee in our future that we will build some more middle schools that possibly we could take it out of the vault.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. That that is a remains a possibility. You know, in this whole process, I I really talked to Mr. Calhoun. I said, you know, you really need to give me a compelling argument as to why we would do this. And he proceeded to give me a really compelling argument as to why we should do this. And. And it is about that L is representative of Lexington High School and. And it really is across the state, that brand. That L brand is very important. And so just like when you see the G, you know, with the tomahawk in it, you know, you know what you're talking about. And and so that that's a really. Big brand for for Lexington High School. And I do think it it makes a lot of sense to move forward, but it's also a recognition that we will, we're not going to, Lexington Middle School is not gone forever. I'm sure that name will get reused and we will will christen another school that in the future. And and we also plan on hopefully doing some special things with the Lexington Middle School campus. As well as Pelean and Gilbert as we move out of those campuses as well that honors. The educational delivery models. Through the year, so to speak, in those areas.
Okay, Ford, we're going to continue with eleven point five, which is the first reading for policy BEC executive sessions, open meetings. Ford, this is for your information only. And I think, Dr. Little, you want Ms. Hill to address this?
Yes, ma'am.
So, Ford, we have, this is a policy you're going to recognize. We have dealt with this in the past. Several times, it is up for revision again. It is, you'll see in front of you our existing policy with the corrections. And you'll see that that is the model school board association policy anyway. So it includes some corrections that they suggest and some corrections they recommended to us by our attorney. So this is of course for your. For first reading. So we ask that you look at it carefully. It's been carefully reviewed by our attorneys. It is based on law about the confidentiality of executive sessions and it comes from the model policy recommended by the South Carolina School Board Association.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Are there any questions or comments at this time for this policy board? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. We are now going to go to twelve point O, which is items for board information. This is for board information only. All of this does come from Mr. Salters. We have a monthly general fund financial report for April twenty twenty. We have a monthly general fund budget transfers report for April twenty twenty. We have a monthly capital projects report, April twenty twenty, and a monthly unauthorized procurements report from April twenty twenty. And that is for information only and thirteen point O is adjourned. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Oswald. All in favor, please stand up and we will see you in June. Thank you.